Y'all, that was the best time I have ever seen. So, thank you, Rick.
Yeah.
You have made my week.
Okay, good deal. I meant exactly the way I said it.
I loved it. I loved it. It's probably gonna play over and over on my computers. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
We were supposed to have a presentation from local chapter of National Action Network at Ford, but we're not here yet, so we'll start with...
Start with me.
With you.
Yeah. I'd have to put something on the top about trash again. And I sure don't wanna be known as the trash is hot, but...
I think you should come and tell me exactly what you're gonna say.
Set your up because...
I wanna go over something. What precipitatingly wanted to put this on the agenda to get an understanding. There was a car parked at a place that a constituent called and told me about it, and just wanted to get it moved. It's in violation ordinance. I contacted codes, the, and got a response back. It stated that I asked how long would it take to get all this, to get it moved? And Inspector Stanton said it would probably take a minute. That the owner of the home where this car was leaving the park lives in Florida. And you gotta give them notice and all that kind of stuff. And so I looked at the ordinance, and the ordinance thirteen two oh five speaks about you have to give notices. And it says the procedure for removal is notice shall be given to the owner or resident of the property upon which the set vehicle is located, standing as in violation of ordinance. And I wanna make sure that we're on the same page. Codes from this statement says you gotta give notice to the owner. But this clearly says to me owner or resident of the property. I wanna hear from codes about that.
Yes, and actually, we give two notices. You give a first notice, and you can put it on the car at the residence, and we mail one to the owner. And then you give the second notice, and then after that, your option is you can tow it.
Okay, but now is that a procedure that you all just follow? Because the ordinance doesn't say that. It just says notice to the owner or resident of the property.
Well, that's our...
And if that's the way you do it, I wanna go by this because it takes too long. And I'm not fussing at you or anything. It just takes a long time. If you send the numbers and you do a certified mail, they get a return back from it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I looked at this too. It says nothing about certified mail. It just says you have to show a mailing to the owner. A copy shall be mailed to such owner. Doesn't say anything about certified mail at all. And then what?
This is the only one that we were bonds, okay.
Yeah, this is, you're talking for a car, right?
Yeah, yeah. And then what happens is if you know, you send it to the owner who's out of state, then the owner doesn't get it. Then it comes back, you know, a week later, the owner didn't get it. Then you send another one, and the eyesore is still there for forever. And so I would like to just get an understanding. Because if it said just to the, give notice to the resident, to the owner, then I want to do an ordinance to change to the resident. But I see here it says owner or resident of the property. So what I'm trying to see, if you, your office would...
Did you take that out of the car ordinance?
Out of what?
Out of the car ordinance booklet?
Yeah, thirteen, thirteen two oh six. Yeah, thirteen two oh five parking and store it on our residential property.
Richard, we'll, we'll take it. If there's a quicker process, you know, it may be something that we were told legally we had to do, in case we towed somebody's car off. And, and they, they say, well, why'd you do it? And under what grounds did you do it? But I'll check into it.
Okay, now, it says you gotta give the owner of the car notices. It's the way it, it legally applied. Both of them to be noticed, just one of them to... It says the notice should be directed to the owner of the vehicle at any lien holders and the owner of the premises.
Well, lien holders.
So, that gets into a lot on that lien holder.
But the whole thing, I'm telling you, it takes too long. If somebody got trash and they got stuff around, and see, they calling me. You know what I'm saying? They calling me. And then if, then you try to get involved in it and it's still there, and they looking at the eyesore for a week or two weeks later because they got notice, that just takes too long.
We don't have attorney here, but with a simple fix, they put either or. You contact the owner or the resident?
We can, we'll look into it, and if there's a quicker process, we're all in favor of a quicker process.
But make sure you look and see what, it doesn't say certified mail required at all in the ordinance we got. It says mailing.
Well, the certified mail is just, is just a way to get that if we end, if we end up in a legal situation with the owner because he towed his car off, and he said we didn't have the authority to, and he didn't get any notice. Because that's the first thing they're gonna say is they didn't get noticed. And then they're gonna, we need evidence to show that they got noticed. So, so the code says one thing, but then the process of legally making sure you have evidence when you do something like that. Because you're taking somebody's property and you're taking away from them. So before you do that, you gotta make sure you got, you dotted all the i's and the c's.
See, this thing also says that like, somebody got a trashy, that was another thing too. If they got a trashy yard, and I get a lot of calls about that. Y'all get calls about the, the, how level stuff, what's the levy today? What's this, that? I don't get those kind of calls. I just get calls about the trash is back here in part of my house.
Four trash cans. I did four trash cans into the code. One will keep them shaken up. They're laying out around there. So I would look at it.
We updated that we could notice the property. Noticing the properties on the property owner, we can go to the property and notice like on the door. That's for, that's for illegal dumping trash and animals, I believe.
I think that was last updated in oh eight, the car ordinance. So we may need to look at that because we've run into issues in areas where...
And the ordinance about the, about the animals, illegal dumping and the trash was, I think we did allow for, especially like FedEx as opposed, because they definitely did say certain things. We admitted that awards, not the one you have in your hand, but other awards you did last year.
I'll, I'll, I'll work with...
Okay, and one other thing that I'll be through with about the person that has the house and it's just messed up, you know, the weeds up there and got trash all in the house and stuff like that, is the eyesore. I was looking at that ordinance, and this ordinance says that when you have property like that, that the city has to serve the property owner. And again, that, that causes problems if the owner is out of state. I'm suggesting, why don't we say serve the resident of the property? Why it gotta be the owner? Why should it just be the resident, the one staying there?
Yeah, the property owner is well being responsible for the property. Whatever lease agreement they have, the property owner is still the responsible party. That's why they know about the property.
Well, see, I think we all change that. I think we all be the resident, whoever's staying there. Because it's like, oh.
No, we can't go after somebody that's not the property owner. Now, we can go after the property. There's some process for that. They're, they go through chance re, and that's not a quick process.
My opinion is just try to speed it up.
Well, I'm all in favor of speeding it up, so I'll, I'll see what I can do.
It's obvious you can't just go from the property owner. You have to go through a procedure. But can we also put something in there for the resident and let him be a little respons者? Not with a total project, with a fifty dollar fine?
Probably responsible to have a, we have a lease of the property to them. They can put something in there where he's to stay.
Yeah, I, I, that's a great question that I don't know the answer to. I think we can see if we can. I guess this we've been trying to figure out this whole time. Majority of the time, it's not, if your owner of property is not the owner doing it, it's the resident, but I think it's, it's the mechanism of the owner account. The owner holding the res, holding the leasee account.
I don't think the property management company can put anything like that in a lease.
Yeah.
I don't think a property management company can put anything like that in a lease.
So, I'll keep it in property?
Well, we have to put in a standard in there, but I don't think we can put something in that if the homeowner were to be fined because they violated rights or they violated codes.
Yeah, if you put the standard in there, what it is, and then apply it to like the lease, and then help to the standard.
We can terminate their lease, but we can't pass a fine down to them.
Well, again, we'll...
Lucy will be here ready for her pop quiz in a couple minutes.
Ask him before he sits down.
And another thing, why codes and having sanitation here? Is there anything that, you know, you all on the front line. Is there anything that, that, that we're not doing that you think should be done in order to get trash up quicker? Because like I said, everybody else in these districts, their districts are clean. I got a lot of litter, litter, litter in my district. And they just throw stuff out there. And so is there anything that you all can think of that y'all might be...
How many piles do we have scheduled through May thirteen, May twelve?
Over thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred.
Two little more across the street.
Scheduled, but I made...
I guess we're on the side main. I have a question on that.
Well, let me ask, you don't have to say anything at all. I just thought I'd throw it out there. If there's anything you all can think about that would, that would make the process going better. If not, send it to the mayor, me, and whoever later. But I just wanted to open up the opportunity in case you thought of something I had.
This is regarding that. A constituent asked me, he, and you may know or you may not, but he said that his son-in-law lives in Myland, and they saw City of Jackson trucks picking up things in Myland. Do we have a contract with them in any sort of way?
Apparently he does.
Well, he said his son-in-law lived in Myland, and he was noticing. And I was like, well, maybe that's why it's taken so long. They had a ton.
We can, we can, I guess on that too, to make sure it's not in there.
Okay, I just wanted to check on it.
So, Mermagen.
Yeah, we get a pregnant salmon for two weeks.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, we, after the twenty eighth, we sent down, our private department was first on scene there to do search and rescue, and we sent a quarter down for two weeks to help clean it up.
We did do litter index this week, and those numbers will be coming up. But our city's litter index numbers are improving. I mean, they look so much better from last year to this year. And actually, East Jackson looks, they were our lowest ranked last year, and they're our best ranked this year. South Jackson is actually our worst ranked this year, so.
Somebody ready to let JP?
Can Austin, maybe just touch on what, even though I said when we talked about actually what we're gonna be doing for bulk waste and pick up some of it?
Sure, brought my notes.
Pop quiz for you too.
We're gonna be running a few Saturdays just to catch up on some of our bulk waste piles. Instead of trying to mess up our current schedule, like we already mentioned, we've got thirteen hundred that's out there. Instead of trying to catch up throughout the line, we're gonna be pulling from the end of the list. So not to confuse those that have scheduled. Does that make any sense, what I'm saying to folks? We have a community, what was all that, Derek?
Drop off.
A community drop off center that we're gonna have seventeenth of this month. And we're gonna try to extend out more piles per driver if possible. We're gonna schedule them that way in hopes that we can get them. That's all depending on a couple of factors, obviously. Depending on the size of piles, depending on the wait times to make deals, things like that. But we're trying to increase our effectiveness out there as much as possible. Try to get caught up or at least shrink that number. Because obviously, the smaller that we can get our scheduled out there, the more piles we can actually be available to go pick it up. Does that make sense?
I know you gotta have a little, you gotta use common sense. But I saw that I got drive by a pile twice, and it couldn't take about five minutes to pick that up. I just don't see why that's...
At the micro level of just that shrink, that makes sense. Maybe the macro level of, they have fifty piles scheduled, and they're running that, they're running those routes just like a UPS driver. They may drop off neighbors' house like that. And so the routes that we're running based on the schedule, the recollects, is actually saving us twenty thousand a year.
It is, it is. And I would have different saved another three. Because if you're right there...
But if you fill up before you get to the scheduled pile, you have to run the dump before then, and then the person that got their, actually scheduled...
My, 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 my only sentence is common sense. If your truck's almost full, open any more in it.
But you go, you go up, but pick it up, and you set more routes to go, you don't know that's gonna get full before then.
Yeah, let me, let me defend pickups on that. Because I felt the same way you felt.
Well, we're right.
Right, no, no, not that. I'll reconsider that. If, if, if they're on a schedule to pick up stuff, and they see something right there, and they stop and pick it up, then they get behind on picking up other stuff. And then what happens, the people who called in and scheduled don't get their stuff picked up. And so they're, they're upset. The way the solution to that would just be just the person who's in the truck just make a note, here's some trash here, and put it on the schedule or something like that. But not, you can't just stop and pick it up and know it's right there.
I agree with you, and but my only sentence is common sense. Mayor pointed out, if the truck's out full, you don't put anything else in it because it can mess you up. But if you're right there, don't send anything else down there.
Yeah, but you're still stopping and you're picking down.
My point is, if you might do it twice in your route, you wouldn't do it ten times.
Okay, no, you wrong on that. One last, you just, then I'll be moving it. I wanted, I wanted, I wanted to, and I'll, I'll be through. I wanted to, 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 to me and codes, we have a place on Houston and Harris Street that we pick it up, and when they dump it, we pick it up. Once we pick it up, they dump against recurring dump stop. And I've made a special request and asked them to pick it up because it was just really messed up. And they, and they did it expeditionally, and I really do appreciate that. I wanna say it publicly. Also, H and S did the same thing. Well, lady had stuff, just, just, oh man, all kind of stuff. And they made a way to pick that up quickly as well. I wanna thank you publicly for that, for that as well. And then I wanna make requests for these, for cameras. This is the last thing, for cameras. Because these recurring dump stops, codes and H and S, they tested that. They pick them up, and as soon as they pick them up, people dump back again. And we just gotta catch them, because until we catch them, they gonna keep doing it. And we need to get some cameras to put at those recurring dump spots, recurring spots. And they know where recurring spots are.
What about that guy that we know and know every day, Mary Lonne?
Was it that expensive?
Well, he's been served a trash pass notice on all those private properties. That's all those properties that are probably over there. He's been serving trash pass notice. And so they're trying to, they're trying to catch these all the properties that's dumped. He's gonna get served trash pass, but they gotta kick in the process of doing that. And so they've also, they've reached out, codes and, I know PD has reached out to all the property owners over there about the dumping and about not allowing them on the property.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask my question real quick first. On this community drop off, is this gonna be like where people can bring old paint cans and stuff any once a year, or is this like...
So we gotta, we gotta look on T deck for that.
I think we'll be late.
I think it's in October.
They used to talk to me once a week.
Can you put latex on it?
Yeah, you can do latex. It's just gotta be dry, like you can open the top, put cat litter in it, let it dry out for a couple of days, and then you can put it in your reginaldage.
All right, then we're gonna come back to Austin and get a sheet in front of him and give an update on storm water.
So you should see your storm water master plan schedule in front of you. We're actually, we're showing that we're four months completion of survey, and that's not necessarily accurate, but it's cushioned. We're still kind of ahead of schedule right now. As of right now, Jones Creek, Central Creek, Sandy Creek, Bayberry, and Dyer are completed surveying. You see, they still are located on the schedule. But the reason for it is there are certain locations throughout some of these, some of these waterways where the assets are in a dangerous place. And we need traffic control. The street department's gonna be working in coordination with them so we can provide some traffic control to prevent folks from kind of being in harm's way. So you'll probably see next month everything moving down a month, but those staying, staying growing because there's still assets that they still have to capture. Boise Creek's about ninety percent finished with surveying completion. And if you look down and see that orange, which is our conditions assessment, we started it technically six weeks, or six months after surveying began. The intention of that was we get surveying far enough ahead to identify the assets. Makes it a whole lot easier for the conditions folks to come in behind them to those already known assets and conditions assessments. So they're actually speeding up and kind of closing that gap with surveying. Public involvement obviously kind of went off the charts beginning of this month. There was a whole lot of information that was pushed into our, our storm water master plan that Kenny pushes out on our social, social media. Obviously, had a whole lot more interaction. Beginning of this month, we had a whole lot of flood. And that, that's almost priceless information from a, an assessment of your storm water system. Because if you can watch a rainfall in your time period, it shows you the hydraulics over a specific area. People know when, they took images, they took videos, they took pictures of things, and that's priceless information. But when they upload it into that master plan on our socials, we just basically take it, upload it straight into our database. That shows us based on rainfall, time, volume, what it will do in that area based on the assets that are carrying that rainfall. So we're getting a whole lot more interaction. We got the bid, we get any more rain. But if we did, that just increases the amount of information we give folks, which only benefits this state, so. Any questions?
Yes, sir. So, the green, talk to me about, this is where we are as far as the survey goes.
Correct.
And then this is where we are as far as you've looked at it, assessed it. So are there any of these, like, the two bottom ones here are longer. What does that mean?
Just means those assets will be the last ones conditioned to says.
Okay, okay.
It's not that it's the extent of damage or degradation or it's any worse than any of the others. It's just, that's where it's placed in line, just in the schedule.
Okay, and a little bit off the subject, but would you let everybody know when we did have all that rain, how you worked with the fire department, and you all saved a lot of those houses from getting water in the houses?
Yes, we, of course, we had extensive flooding all over the city. Dozens and dozens of streets shut down. Sometimes it was periodically, just when we got rainfall, we had to shut down the, we had to shut down the streets, and we could open them up a couple hours later. In some cases, they stay closed, being tired of it. Our biggest, obviously, we had a lot of flooding in subdivisions and interresidential areas also. Palmer Woods was one of those locations.
Where what?
Palmer Woods, right off of Highland. They had an area... Um, that, they had an area of two streets, uh, where their detention pond was overwhelmed. Streets were flooded. Um, they didn't have a whole lot of drainage anywhere in the area. So it was basically just collecting inside of their streets. Homes were being threatened, uh, with flooding. Uh, we got J E A to help us out and get us two four inch trash bombs and we set it up just to try to pump as much water as we could off the street, uh, to try to prevent those homes from flooding. A fire department showed up, hooked up a tanker right next to us and started pumping.
Now, where is that exactly on Highland?
Just south of where the highway is. I'm talking fairways.
North Highland.
I'm talking fairways.
Okay, North Highland, okay. I was saying South Highland, North Highland.
That place backs right up their old golf course.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Uh, but appreciate the fire department for all those assistance. Uh, the folks that we were out there with, we actually had a meeting today, uh, with a few of their residents. Uh, the folks that we met when we were out there, but basically three days to try to fight that flooding, were very appreciative of what we're doing, um, understanding of the situation and understood that we're just trying our best to prevent those places from flooding. Because I, I don't know if those folks have flood insurance or not, more than a second, they're not.
Now, what we're doing on stormwater, would that alleviate that problem then?
Uh, we're investigating that.
Yeah, tell us what exactly the problem is.
Yeah.
So briefly, how much money have we allocated and how much have we spent so far and how much have we got of the assessment?
If you'd asked me that question before I came here, I could have gave you the same. Uh, maybe in our gap, maybe our gaps in between.
What's the latest, some change I just hear? How, how soon are we, how soon are we, were we ready to make some proposals on fixing the problem? Because all this is studying the problem, right?
It is, but we, uh, we really need the study to be done. Uh, um, that, that gives us, uh, gives us a lot of information to know where to begin. Obviously, we have plenty of opportunities, uh, that we can identify today that we clearly need.
Do we plan on trying to start some of these projects before we finish the complete survey or is it possible?
We got a server in the pipe now, uh, after you got done with Aslan, we can talk about the hazard mitigation and the projects we got going there. I think from what, not a stormwater person or engineer, I'm not, understand if we go in, go, hey, this pipe's too small, let's fix it. Yeah, we did, yeah, we did something down the string. So we want to make sure to get the whole system analyzed first. We, right, right now, we're looking at fixing stuff that we know has failed and then we can work doing that. We don't want to go and make improvements on something and make a problem.
Tear it up, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
And according to the hazard mitigation grants, uh, we're still, we, we've got basically the last bit of information today uh, to send off to, uh, to the state and the FEMA, uh, for funding. So we're hoping to have those funds pretty soon. And, uh, next meeting I'll, I'll, uh, bring you those specific locations, all the, uh, which I know our biggest issue, I think, with that entire hazard mitigation is, uh, Old Henry.
Old Henry, or East Jackson.
I know that we want to do some paving out there, but we have to make those improvements first, so.
That's going to be a ninety-six inch pipe replacement, it's costly.
That needs to be a summer job also.
Ask another question. So after our study is complete, is that when we're going to start looking at how we can start to pay for this?
No, they're working on, they're working on that timetable. Well, we, here's what we don't want to do. We don't want to come up with a, with a paper proposal that's too big or too small.
Okay.
Um, and so they're working on that, that's right now, trying to just get the infrastructure, if you will, on the mechanisms to do that. But like I said, until we know what the problem is and how quick we can tackle the things and what our most emergent need is, you know, we don't want, I'll give you the example of Nashville, they had a stormwater assessment, uh, utility fee for years and no escalation. And then they got some more studies done and they were way behind and had to jump up, you know, like a little over a hundred percent. And so we don't, you know, we want to make sure that we're paying for it, how we need to pay for it, not underplan or overplan.
Good. Thank you, Austin. I appreciate it.
Now that Lewis is here, we can go back to our pop quiz.
Is it true, false, multiple choice?
Somehow, possibly, Don, they'll ask the question.
I would call Teresa right quick.
You call Teresa, I'll ask her questions. Yeah, what's?
The, the ordinance talks about, I'm going to trashy yard or vehicles that are, that are, that are abandoned vehicles and everything move.
Do you have it on?
Yeah, the ordinance says, when you talk about notice, it doesn't say anything at all about, uh, you have to send a notice to them certified mail return, return receipt requested. And also in those things, it talks about giving, for instance, the, uh, trashy yard, you have to give notice to the owner. And I'm wondering why don't you just have to give notice to just the, the renter? Because it's easier with, because the renter is in there. The owner might be out of state, can't find him, you send a certified mail, it, it comes back and you keep on doing this and the stuff is, the property is still there looking unsightly.
Well, do you want to move to amend that order?
Yeah.
Come on, that, the, the reason it is is because it's like in real estate taxes, it's easier to find the renter until it's time to pay up. You hardly ever collect it, you sue the renter.
Yeah, the other question we had was to couldn't even serve the renter, ask you the property owner.
Yeah, if, if the renter, if the renter is identified as the cause of the problem.
Yeah.
That's like running red lights where they have that camera and people say, I like driving.
All right, the renter is the cause of the problem. When is the one standing there?
And can you prove it? I mean, how, how, how do I prove that when I go to court?
You said this dude is in the house. You know what to say, show them that he's within that, that's all you do.
Well, how do you?
You ask him, do you live in the house?
You're a defense lawyer, you've been a defense lawyer. Are there other people that live in the house, the people that visit, do they have neighbors?
He's got the lease.
Those are practical problems. The person who's got the lease, yeah, that person's blameful of lease.
Not always.
Well, that's who I'll go after and I'd have to wait.
I'm not opposed to the amendment or going after people we can find, but, um.
What, you're scratching both of them? Yeah, I think, I think it's what, not now, Lawrence, what, what they, how does it make the process quicker, easier to get things safe?
Yeah, that's good.
Believe it, believe it. I don't know, I think the, the things might, we could try.
Might what?
We could try. What we got to do is to amend the ordinance, we'll look around at what other cities our size do, that's kind of what.
All right, would you do that, please? And then also, I didn't see anywhere in there where it said you had to send the, the, uh, notice certified mail return receipt requested. Is that a requirement? Because the ordinance just says you have to mail it. It doesn't say anything at all about getting this certified mail, anything at all.
Unless that gets into our history over, you know, where somebody, the first thing they're going to say is, I didn't know my property. I didn't get a notice.
Yeah. Well, then with the way the mail is these things, that's more and more believable.
That's right.
Yeah, sure is.
Certified costs quite a bit more, takes longer, can be ignored and it comes back. Uh, you know, we do the tax of certified mail. Our office does those and I'd say twenty-five to thirty percent never get served.
But they don't have an ISOs coming out there, well, maybe you got to keep looking at it every day.
Well, right, you're looking at the problem, I'm kind of describing the solution. Certified mail is not a great solution.
We got FedEx or illegal dumping. Not FedEx, so.
Yes, sir.
I think, I think it's what, kind of what I was asking of. The only way the ordinance reads is mail it to them, doesn't say, has to have a receipt and he was asking why we do that.
Here's what I suggest, is you and anybody else at council or otherwise that wants to sit and meet with Teresa or me or both and brainstorm some better ways to do it, I'm all for it.
I am ready. Just let me know when. All right, you do it.
We're not being built.
Post on their doors?
That's already in the provision, it says post on the property. But it says post on the property and just doing posting is not sufficient by itself. It says posting and notify the owner.
In all seriousness, I haven't read this, I would use it, but it's, it's not been a real sharp tool because the, the problems about getting notice, proving who actually is responsible. Yet we don't have group responsibility, everybody in the house. But we'll look at it and we'll do some preparations.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I thought how my Jenny, who puts that presentation, would come out here.
I have a question. Service merchandise building, are we looking at tearing that down?
We have the bond issue.
When, when that's complete, okay?
I want to hear an update on the title.
Yes.
Yes, sir, yeah.
All right, so, uh, Van Drive and Stone Bridge, uh, to be paid, uh, with the contingent starting date of May twelfth. And they're going to do that at night, nine P M to nine A M, so hopefully we won't make everybody out there angry. Um, but, but that's when they'll do that. Happy Ride is complete. Um, Christmasville Road is milled. Weather Ridge, Cooper Anderson, East University Parkway, Park at Home, or next be milled and packed for four mile surface. Cooper Anderson's milled. Yeah. Yeah. And then, um, Van Drive and Country Club is waiting on intersection lighting to come in and it'll be completed. And if you have anyone complaining about a culvert on Ashport, that is not in a, that's not the city portion of Ashport. I had someone almost run off in there the other day because the sign was not, not particularly, I'll make sure we know that's who it is.
What about singing church? Where is that?
It's in this direction, yeah.
Okay.
And just a question about our budget. I know you said that it will be in there, but it just wouldn't have a line item. So when we do meet in two weeks to look at the budget, will that line item?
Yeah, it's not there right now, we're working on that. We're, we're working on some projections for the end of this year. That's why I haven't sent the capital over yet because I'm going to work on that because I haven't talked with any of the departments about whether, whether or not they're going to get. And so we're, that's why I'm saying everything about that right now. So hopefully, uh, as soon as Nathan provides me the numbers, um.
That, that was my point, just a side note, that we did talk about some of the things, especially helping all of us.
And so you also, there's, there's a line in one of the street department budgets that has an additional operating supplies, an additional five hundred thousand. That's for asphalt purchase for our in-house.
And that aligns with other questions, what do you think, it's just one second if you don't mind. There were some other things that we had talked about like commerce or different things that we're currently already committed to that we're working on projects. So sometimes when this comes up, council members might look at it and go, hey, where was that budget? That was something we were going to be able to maybe have a side note so we could reassure everyone that it is covered.
There are two things. First of all, we're working on just the capital project tracking that we're doing already. And we talked about that, there had been a lot of motion on it, but there has been some. And so that information is being captured. The second thing is that when you see your capital budget request in detail, you are going to see, in some cases, paragraphs explaining why, how, where.
Yeah, I think for right now, right now, you see, you're seeing a summary report to what we're sending out. And so once you get budget booked, like every line, there's been, there's been amendment or change and there's a comment. You'll see all the comments of what's been changed and what's the justification. That'll all be in there, you're just getting what the, just the numbers are.
Roll numbers right now, but, but there's a lot of detail in there. So, I mean, they named streets.
And, and I, I think that's good, I mean, for all of it, because we don't know what's going on behind the scenes and how much work has gone on. And it's good for us and it is good for the public. And then there's no confusion that, you know, this never came out of the air.
Right. Well, and already I can see where, um, I mean, you can see the changes already that we're making. You can see the changes, some of them, some of, actually, uh, Mayor Conger has corrected a couple of mistakes. Uh, and you see, he may, he's making a note when he corrects his mistake and we can see it. I mean, you know, and, uh, so there's, there's a lot of transparency and a lot of, a lot of visibility into how this process is working.
Considering color coding, being color coded and sales spreadsheet.
Yeah.
I vote Nathan Lutter, I've sometime asked, back asked him to this, he's been in the process of reading, but we, we really, 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 really need night, uh, uh, twenty twenty threes capital projects that were done and completed. We need twenty twenty fours that were done and completed, my assets have a little more roles. And we need twenty twenty five, and we need to break that down, is how much has been approved, how much has been, been spent? And is there any encumbered money going over? Because that's what screwed us up, we didn't know where it went. And I still don't know where it was last year. So are, are we going to be able to get those to a, to have a base to start with?
You, you will. Uh, there are several things that are more immediately important right now in order to, to move forward with the budget of bond and, and finish our annual financial review. And, and that, those, those are taking my priorities, but we're working at them. The other thing that will be, that beginning July one, that we, that we will do, right now, we track encumbrances outside of, of our financial management software.
Um, beginning by July one, we will begin tracking encumbrances in our financial management software.
And so there will be just immediate everyday visibility of how much have we encumbered toward next year.
Well, this is actually affecting the general fund, which you shouldn't, because we got hours and we flip back, back and forth, call it a general fund one place and then later on call the capital, i.e. home shelter. And that's why we need this background information so we have it all in one piece of paper, exactly where we are, what we need and go. Nathan, you're still young, you, you, I'm not blaming you to get to, you got two more weeks.
Well, I mean, I mean, I was on a call with.
Eleven months and twenty-nine days.
I was on a call with, I was on a call with the City of Franklin, uh, a week ago, uh, because we were comparing notes on some stuff. And they're, they're a little larger city than we are and, uh, they, and you, you keep saying a magic word and, uh, you keep saying encumbrance and that is something that they don't track. They don't know. Now, it may just be that they have an attached, that they don't have to worry about it. I, I don't know. But, uh, that's something that they're trying to get to as well. And, uh, that, that's going to be a big change for us. It will be a big change for several people in this room that are sitting around the edge because when they get ready to request something, if it's not there, they can let them put it in. But, but long term, it means that when you ask me right now, how much have we committed that we haven't spent? I could give you down to a penny the answer to that question. Right now, I cannot do that.
But you do agree it needs to be, have that number.
Oh, Lord, yes, sir. I mean, that's, I mean, that's a basic part of financial reporting.
And that is, I think, something that last year that you all talked about to maybe help us and remind us that this has been committed. Because a lot of times when Stan stands up and says, this is project number one at the sidewalk or this or that, then that will ring true then to council.
And that's the goal, that's the goal is to get there and we're, we're working to get there.
This, this kept following.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, we've, and it, for like Martha and Johnny and those around the area of how far we've come.
Oh, oh, God.
I think, I think we start focusing on what, what the next step we need to get to, we don't stop and go, wow, we've actually come a long way in how we report and how we provide information.
Absolutely.
This is true compared to that one, but I'm, I'm still getting calls about forms and all. We had to use some video conferencing during COVID. And right now, let's, let's pick on the budget committee because that's the one we met this week. Uh, if you don't have a, a form, what can you do? And is it necessary for the budget committee to approve an ordinance amendment or not?
The way the ordinance is written, yeah, I don't have to approve before the council comes. And so they, they, they met, they couldn't discuss, I mean, they could, they could discuss, they couldn't vote.
Put it on it.
Yeah, they didn't have a meeting, they just had a discussion session.
So, so to get a, a amendment on the council's agenda, it just call you and ask you to put it there?
No, no, I, I don't just put it there. We, we also, we run it by the budget committee, we send it to the budget committee, they all see it, um, and then it comes to us.
Look, if you don't have a form, they all, they all see it.
They, they, yeah, they, it's emailed everyone. They don't have to be at the meeting, they, they open their emails and look at it.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, is that legal?
Open their email with it.
No, is it legal for us to write information and say the budget committee has reviewed it or whatever?
The way the ordinance is written, the ordinance is written that the budget does not require the budget committee to approve for it to be on the agenda for the city council.
Okay, and to get onto the agenda by just your approval, whatever leak that you want to do is fine. And requirements you want to put on it.
No, I follow the process of doing to the budget committee every time, it was presented to them so they get eyeballs on it.
Dr. Lewis, the attorney, have to improve that.
Okay, so. You can look at your file and see if the.
If it's a Jackson T N dot W email, I can see when you opened it, when you read it, when you downloaded it. And when, and when you forward it to an outside email, I can see all that.
I've got another question if it's, if we can move forward. Um, there's been some discussion about the C R I and homeless shelter. Um, is the city now out of this and, or do we just?
We're out of it.
Yeah. I mean, and I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, I've heard it to everyone since people are like blaming council because it's not happening again.
Well, I'm just telling them you like your pockets a little bit. But, yeah, I, you know, we had the conversation of this was, it's been four years where this is where we were. You all approved the, the contract with the C R A to go forward with, to agree on something or not with Tennessee Home Solutions. And that didn't happen and so.
And we also had kind of mumbled about maybe that six hundred thousand could be used towards infrastructure or roads.
Yeah, we're looking, uh, exactly somewhere, um, got the, uh.
I got excited when you pointed at me.
No.
No. Some of them, he's got big numbers.
Zach, Zach got the bid back for your second prepaying, uh, which I think was a little bit more than what we had budgeted, we split that total dollar amount up. And so, then we could, my proposal is going to be, uh, we ain't got there yet to take the money that was allocated to that to put into our contracts for the city service.
We need to do some housekeeping, a, a resolution saying that we look for our offer or something like that, so that two years from now, somebody could come up and say, y'all pass this, see, council pass it now, we're going to do it. I'll tell you.
We've been talking about it a lot.
Well, good, I don't think so.
I have, uh, one more little thing. Since it's budget season and we had talked about this last year, I just want to make it openly requested that for audit meets in this room, and then I believe you all have already talked about and discussed hopefully upgrading this room for I-T.
Yes, we're moving forward with that, uh, the, they're working on the purchase right now. They'll, you'll have two, if you're familiar with an owl camera, uh, coming down from the ceiling, that'll do a 360 camera, when someone talks, it'll, the camera will turn to you for live shooting or recording.
He'll be the star of the show. He'll be the.
They're going to have their own owl.
Yeah, he wants his own camera, there he is.
You've been very good on judging, unless you might be doing that. You might call a kennel something here?
Yeah, so, I mean, if they're, if someone is, if someone's complaining right now that the audio is not that great, that we are in process, this is, we're using what we have, uh, and so, the audio may not be great on the screen on Facebook, but this is our, it's our first step, huh?
What is that issue?
Man, that was the camera.
It's me, though, that's what I use for my podcast.
In a couple of months, you'll have those coming down from the ceiling, you'll be able to have a projector in here too for any kind of Zoom meeting as well and, and all that, we're coming in a couple of months.
Because I was asked also to report on that for the audit, so I can let her know.
I-T. We're on the P O now.
We're on the P O.
If you all want to use these cameras at your website, maybe they're even going to use those cameras.
No, but I'm just asking to do, our chairman asked, and so. Animal Care Center, are we doing it on that road and what's going on there?
We signed that contract two weeks ago.
I know we, CAD drawings were just given to Norwood to start the.
We got 90 days from contract signing, so.
Correct.
Signed two weeks ago, they got 90 days to complete the process.
That's on the, I mean.
Last one. It got passed down.
Last, last one.
Oh, last one, yeah. It was 90 and 60.
It's just we got $80,000 dog cages in it, I get weird phone calls.
What?
I got a phone call saying, are they paying 80, 80, I tell you, $80,000 for a dog cage?
That's the stupidest thing I've even heard.
There is $80,000 going towards it, there is, there is kennels in it and that's one of the payments towards it.
But that's not for one cage.
Yeah, no, it's a bunch of them, yeah, like one individual.
Yeah.
When y'all get told in that owl, that's where you're going to go.
You'd be surprised what.
You stop using the house phone, either mobile phone.
I don't, I don't, I killed this, well, I had to kill that, just quick, house phone offered.
What else has been going on that we need to call up on? Is the grocery store coming, like on the main Olive Street?
That's probably. Oh, that stuff you're reading, something's happening, Jack, I don't believe it.
I don't know, like, I, I mean, people are asking me, they're like, hey, I'm in a grocery store, it's coming around. Y'all knows from JP's area, I've come.
We tend to call JP.
They've talked, they've, they've talked about a grocery store, but there's no, there's no definite.
Yeah, so unless, until they put permits to deal, then we don't know, this is resounding. They have to come before.
Oh, it's not the Chick-fil-A thing, like, did that ever happen?
We're still waiting on their traffic study to come back. We've been in conversation with them.
I ain't going to Walmart or Sam's ever again if I live over there, because it's already ignorant. I just don't know.
Well, we do, we're drama serious and we're about to talk about this.
Why are we doing that?
Well, that's when I go there, that's when I see something. To Walmart.
First I thought we were over there for Chick-fil-A, I didn't know where this was going.
Especially when I come, see? It's just very colorful.
I love them. I love it, I love it.
I don't have them.
I got them.
Yeah.
It's already coming, it's resting, it's resting.
So, let's, let's take a 12-minute break before we go to 5, and that way, you can ask Tate this away if he doesn't know a panty.
Can we make that two minutes since we asked about the ballpark and the, um, you know, because they, they put your bed out?
That'll be in the press agenda.
No, but I have this one, he's not here. I do my weight and I did my work over the weekend here, but I do.
Yeah, let's, let's.
I thought I got a pick on you.
Well, you should, I got down here because, and the agenda wasn't even.